Good evening. This meeting is called to order. I'd welcome everyone to the Bogota Board of Education regular meeting, regular meeting, September 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the flag salute. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Present.
Mrs. Coles?
Here.
Mrs. Levens, absent. Mr. Miranda?
Present.
Mr. Ortega?
Present.
Ms. Rucker?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Present.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Present.
We have the court.
Thank you, sir. Also present, Mr. Kennedy Superintendent, Mr. Sukus, our attorney, Mr. Epsil, School Business Administrator and Board Secretary, and Ms. Ruas, our Assistant Board Secretary. I'd like to open to his comments from citizens. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Miranda, second or take it.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I would just ask anyone who wishes to speak to state their name and address, and if you're online to include your name and address, please.
Antonette Ramirez?
Hi, guys. Good evening. Antonette Ramirez, 98 Queen Anne Road. Um, I have two questions this evening. The first one is item number nine dash twenty-one dash twenty-one dash forty-eight, busing with Leonia. I'm just wondering what the cost is to us with teaming up with that. I know it's it's a necessity, but I was just wondering what the cost is.
One thousand max per.
It's one thousand max per student for the added district kids that are going to a charter school. So we, uh, the school out of these kids are going to, they canceled their busing, so these kids were kind of left out. So the only thing we can do is offer them a thousand, thousand, a thousand dollar stipend as per the law for charter schools.
Gotcha.
Luckily, choice schools, choice schools, I'm sorry. Uh, and luckily, Leonia had a run and they decided to pick them up because it was on the way.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other thing is for nine dash twenty-one dash twenty-one dash forty-six for ESS for power professionals, it says something about a 20% markup. Just wondering what that cost is also, please.
Twenty-eight percent markup for power professionals using the company.
Yeah, like what the company cost is.
That 28% extra we are paying for. So if we are paying an hour fifteen dollar to the power professional, 28% extra is the cost to the district extra.
So do you know roughly what the annual cost is to the company?
With this company, we're doing three services. One is the secretarial services, the other is a professional, for professional, the aides, and the other is the substitute teacher. The overall, everything is around 1.5 million dollars we are paying.
1.5 million?
Yes.
Not the markup, that's the total cost.
The total cost. No, 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 but the annual cost with this company is 1.5 for the three services?
You do the math, 28% is to the company.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, someone came to the podium before?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, thank you.
Mike Connors, address, please. Mike Connors?
Mike Connors, 111 Gray Street. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, Mike.
Um, Mr. Kennedy, I just didn't get a chance last week to come on, and I would just like to thank Amanda Montgomery for her service uh, the last number of years. I know she um, is no longer on the board, and I also would like to thank Kathy Van Buren for her years of service. Um, two very selfless people and uh, two wonderful volunteers for our community, and I wish them well in the years to come. That's all I have, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions or comments on agenda items?
I don't see anything else.
All right, with no one else coming forward, may I have a motion to close citizens' comments, please?
Motion, Ortega.
Thank you. Second?
Chavez.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to superintendent's report.
All right, first, I'm walking in addendum tonight for a lunch aid. Uh, we are hiring for lunch aids right now, and actually power professional aides, we are in need of them. Uh, there is a shortage of them, so if anyone is interested, please forward me your resume. I will get them to the people who will interview you. So again, anyone that's interested in being a lunch aid or a power professional in the classroom, we are hiring. Also to agenda item nine twenty-one, twenty-one, thirty-two. Uh, this is the bill list. We are adding a, a bill, a check for 3,370 to it, which will bring the total to 1,111,308.59 cents. 1,111,308.59 cents. We have been reporting our positive cases, our positive COVID cases out to the community. Uh, unfortunately, this is what it is right now. Uh, we will continue doing what we have been doing. Uh, I think I'm going to get down to sending out one letter a week, and we're also going to start a uh, a hub on our website that will be listing all the positive cases. Uh, hopefully, we don't have any more, but we do have to keep notification up. Uh, we will always contact the people that have to quarantine. We are in constant contact with the Health Department, and I have to send a report to the state of Trenton every time we have a positive case. So uh, just so everyone is clear where we are, uh, but we did have another case today. I sent out a letter last night. I, I wasn't going to send out another one today. But moving forward, we're going to try and do one a week. People that are in contact will be notified uh, just so we understand where we are. Also, the aftercare with the company will be starting on Monday, so links were sent out for the registration. So if you still have not registered, please do so. Uh, we have virtual back-to-school night starting tomorrow night at Bixby, Thursday night at Steen, middle school will be on the 29th, and the high school on the 30th. Uh, also, each year, we have to report our graduation pathways. Each year, there is a state assessment or other assessments that seniors must pass to graduate besides meeting their 120 credits. Uh, so I have to report that. So right now, last year, we had eighty-five graduates uh, in the, in the ELA pathway. Fifty-nine of those students passed the state assessment, which was the NJ SAL. NJ S L A. Um, three students passed alternative assessment, which is the AccuPlace or SATs and PSATs. Ten students uh, had alternative requirements uh, due to their IEP. And then thirteen students uh, were requirement was waived under the executive order due to COVID. So in math, forty-three students passed the state assessment, ten students passed an alternative assessment, ten students had the alternative requirement specific for their IEP, and then twenty-two students uh, requirement was waived under executive order. Uh, but to, to be clear on that, those students last year didn't have the most opportunities to take it, and that's why the, the, the executive order waived uh, this requirement because uh, PSATs their junior, um, SATs that most juniors take at the end of their junior year. Um, most of senior year, a lot of things were canceled. Uh, they didn't get a chance to take it. In the past, all students passed some type of assessment, but once it was waived, it wasn't a requirement anymore, so the students didn't take anything. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. We could move on to the minutes of August 31st, 2021.
Kathy, can I just, I have a request?
I'm so sorry, yes.
That's okay. Um, I meant to bring it up last week. I've been contacted by a, a bunch of alumni from Bogota High School um, regarding Les Brown. They would like to know if we could possibly put something by the art room for Mr. Brown, all his years at the high school. Uh, Mr. Fuke contacted me like three times, and um, I was waiting to see if maybe something was going to get done, but I just want to bring it up so he, I know he watches, and you know, it would be nice even if we could put a plaque or
Right.
you know,
Right.
something.
Okay.
I don't know. What do you think, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, he, he was here a long time and coached a lot of different sports.
Yeah, I just think, I don't know, he's been a lot of years. So even if it's just a plaque or in memory of, you know, Les Brown, if we could look into that.
That's a nice idea.
And uh, that's all I have.
I have a few things to go with Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, get me, I'm, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, is, was this, is this more applicable to?
It was just something a little applicable to.
Okay, as long as we can, if it's more new business, we can say, I'm sorry, I know that was a sentimental thing.
I figured since we, uh,
No, go ahead.
I learned recently that we've lost a resident of Bogota who was fairly young. It was a tragic accident, and uh, he was a student here through our school system. He has a child in our school system, and uh, and a member who volunteered as a football coach, played football. Um, and I won't say any names, I guess Mr. Kennedy can look into it later on, but maybe some sort of a war or some recognition, uh, because I'm sure it's a, it's a lot of hardship at home considering that, you know, he has a young, young boy, child in our school system, and maybe just to make that child proud some way, some sort, and we can discuss it, I guess, privately, since I don't know what, what, yeah, I'm not saying the name, but I did, you know, commending someone from our community for such a tragic loss, I figured, I figured about this wall.
All right.
Okay.
I got it.
Thank you. All right, um, the minutes of August 31st, 2021, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Lisa.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please, Ervin?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis, Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda and policy. Um, on policy, nine twenty-one, twenty-one oh one through nine twenty-one, twenty-one thirteen. Keep in mind, please, that one through twelve is the second reading, thirteen is just the first reading, so it will be on again next month. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you. Second?
Chavez.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please, Ervin?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. In education, resolution nine twenty-one, twenty-one fourteen through nineteen, which are consent, may I have a motion, please?
Motion, Lisa.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Dahlia.
Thank you. Discussion? No, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes, but no on nine twenty-one, twenty-one nineteen.
Thank you. Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Continuing in education, uh, new items on the agenda from last week, nine twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Lisa.
Thank you. Second?
Chavez.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. On to personnel, nine twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-one through twenty-six. They were on consent. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Lisa.
Thank you. Second?
Chavez.
My discussion? Roll call?
Well, yeah, I have a discussion.
Yes, sir.
On the personnel. So I would love to know of maybe from Mr. Erfon, Mr. Kennedy, as far as aides go, I, 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 you know, I kind of second the sentiment from Antonette Ramirez. I've also heard it over a course of few months, if we can know why did we go to a private company or, or an agency for aides?
What number are you on, Frank?
Uh, I was going back and forth. I, I did it only because I know it's on, we're on personnel, so I figure have that discussion overall. It's on.
If you're talking about the ESS.
Twenty-one, twenty-one, sorry, we didn't get that. We'll get that. We'll get that. Apologize, Mrs. Van Buren.
Okay, so can you?
I flipped the page too.
That's okay. So you get until we get there?
Yes.
Great. Okay, um, roll call, please, on twenty-one through twenty-six.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, move to the agenda. We could go to nine twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-seven through thirty-one. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Dahlia.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Lisa.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please, Ervin?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Uh, yes, to everything. Um, I have staying from number twenty-seven.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. On finance, nine twenty-one, twenty-one, thirty-two through fifty. May I have a motion, please? Motion, Lisa? Yes.
Miranda.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, Lisa and Frank, thank you. All right, discussion? Frank, is there a question in here?
No, it's on fifty-one, actually.
No.
Okay.
Not there yet.
All right, so if there's no discussion on thirty-two through fifty, Ervin, could you pull the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And if we could move to the addendum, which is also personnel? Nine twenty-one, twenty-one, fifty-one. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you. Second?
Chavez.
Thank you.
Do I open up the discussion? So, yeah, I just want to understand, I wasn't here. Uh, I know when I hear any markup, it means they were paying price on top of cost. Um, so it's obvious that in any organization, the cost factor comes together from insurance cost, what is their personnel cost, their operational cost, their overhead cost, and then comes the markup. So I wonder, and I just would like to know, and why, why, why did the change occur? Why did we decide? And I know normally it's resources, but we're going through a moment where we, even the resources aren't working in our favor uh, in finding personnel. So I just, for the public's clarity and, and a discussion that's come up numerous times, why have we decided to spend twenty-eight more percent?
You mean to go out?
Yeah.
To hiring person?
Outsource, probably.
Sure.
The number fifty-one, it's not the markup. We are hiring that person directly.
Okay.
Uh, but I will explain the ESS to, uh, this one, we kept in, in-house because it's a couple of hours during the lunch, and we, it's manageable, and we hire directly. The other services, as I said before, there are three different services over there. So the secretarial services was outsourced since I was here, I don't know how long before. So we go out, the competitive contracting with that one separately, and then we have another uh, competitive contracting, RFP for the aides, and also substitutes. The substitutes, and all these two are totally different, in a sense, how we receive those services, but the substitute services is the certified staff uh, absence. We are hiring them. There is a active um, operational resources in there. With this company, they have their own pool, so we can fill our absences, our staff absences, and that's why we go through the outsourcing. With the age, it's an option. We could do that way or in-house. When I say twenty-eight percent, it doesn't mean that all the twenty-eight percent goes to the company. They still have the cost for the payroll, payroll taxes, their workers' comp taxes, insurances, all other things. Um, I need to check, I mean, it was the original one is 2019. I don't remember exactly, but around six percent or so goes as a profit to this uh, company, but I can check and email back to you guys.
So another reason that we, we switched over was we were having a tough time fir- finding aides. They came with some more aides that were able to fill. The sub for aides was bigger, so if someone, if someone leaves, we're able to fill it immediately. We don't have to wait to the next board meeting. So if we lose someone tomorrow, we're able, once they get fingerprinted through that company, to start immediately. If not, we would have to wait for another month of the next board meeting. They also offered insurance for their, for the people that were working. Uh, they were offering, I think, once a week pay. So there was a lot of different things that we were hoping to entice more aides. I know that it's been touch and go with the company with some of the aides that have been that have been here in the past, but we do have a lot of aides. Um, so there were some benefits to the aides themselves. We were trying to attract more aides through the company, because I think they were also able to file on insurance, I mean, uh, unemployment in the summer. So there were some benefits to the aides themselves, because with us, they were getting rehired.
Gotcha. We, we know everything. Also, we get the software, the absence management software, we, we can use overall, all district, it's easier to track the absences for our staff, and it's directly upload to our own software too. That's a, a good thing going on over there too. The secretarial services, I believe it was around two, 2010, when we had the budget cut over all the state. I guess this district also went out, out of outsourcing this. If we get those secretaries in-house, probably it will double up with the insurance and the pension cost. Uh, whatever, the twenty-eight percent will be doubled up easily.
May I ask, is that twenty-eight percent spread across all three services that we're outsourcing to them, or is it specific to just the aides?
No, in their proposal responses, they responded that to twenty-eight percent. So they were the cheapest that time, the others over thirty, thirty-five, I believe. So they were the cheapest.
And my last question, um, how, what is the length of this outsourced contract?
This is annual basis. I'm in last June, you renewed, and this is the third year, and we can go up to five years before the five-year end. We have to go another uh, competitive contracting if we don't choose to do it before that.
Okay.
Aside from the twenty-some I percent, is there a longevity bonus, aides who stay for a long period of time? It's typically recruitment, that, that's where they profit the best. But what happens is every year, we determine the rate to the aide and the substitute teacher. Right now, it's just so competitive. Right now, we're paying one hundred thirty-five dollars per deemed substitute teacher, and also we have a new structure, the paying the aides if they are dealing with the PSD or disabled skills versus the resourced aide type of thing. So we have those levels, and I believe that they are also competitive, you know, Bergen County. And how common is it used across other board of educations? Um, I, I know the substitute rate is the one of the highest in the Bergen County. With the aides, when we do the analysis, in the beginning of the year before, during the budget time, it was between the average and the highest in between. It's not the highest, but we are competitive again. Yeah, and, and thank you for that.
I'm sorry, just a quick question, being that you mentioned the salary on what substitute teachers get paid. How much do the aides get paid?
The one that I mentioned, that the PSD one, the per deemed rate is one thirty.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And it goes down to level one twenty, and also, it also depends if they have the teacher certificate or not. How many, just they have, so that one thirty, one twenty, one ten, and one hundred, based on those criteria they have.
The sub, the subs, we try to be competitive, because when we have a teacher out, especially in the high school, it's forty dollars a period. So they teach six classes, two hundred and forty dollars to cover one teacher, because we can't get subs. So I'd rather spend as much money as we can to attract the subs to keep them here than have to pay teachers. Um, you know, not that we don't want to pay teachers, but the teachers want their preps too. Like, they're not always happy to get a sub, but if we don't have coverage, we have to take away their prep.
Right.
So we're trying to be competitive, getting as many subs here that we can when people are out, and then it just helps uh, for a better day, and we're not short-staffed. And Ervin, you indicated we go out to RFP to, for, for these outsourced companies? Or do we have a, like, a list that we choose on? Twenty-eight percent on the surface doesn't sound like a lot, but if it's covering what is essentially their overhead for their insurance and what have you, for me, that's something that I would look for somebody to compete against, because that's a lot, you know, it, it, yes, you have to insure your people, but they would have to insure their people whether we pick them up or not. So to, when we go back out, I think that we need to, you know, be a little firm in that space where the overhead should match reality. You have to, they have to insure their people, whether we hire them to work here or they work somewhere else.
Yeah, that's one factor we always assess during the budget process, if we can have a more competitive. It's not only that, also, we check the services we are receiving, are we satisfied or not. Um, these are type of services, eh, we really need to go by year annually. Anything is not odd, we're just going adverse, but that, those are the times that actually we rule with the principals, our faculty, um, and then we assess if whether we go at the RFP itself or just to renew.
And last question on this topic, for me, anyway, um, are, do we have the ability to outsource with multiple vendors? Because it may be more advantageous to, to source from somewhere else for the aides, rather than allow them to bump a twenty-eight percent increase on their lowest, you know, on that lowest paid thing, they pay the aides the least, but we're still covering that same overhead.
Uh, technically, based on our contract, yes, we can.
Okay.
But operationally.
It gets difficult. It gets difficult.
Difficult to manage, manage more, yeah. For me, it's, you know, I look at, I, sometimes we fear pensions and insurance, but we, in the school system, we have a lot of that. You know, we have lifelong pensions for educators, we have mandatory insurance, we have unions, we abide by. Um, and because I recognize, and I've been hearing it lately, that we have, we're having trouble finding the same resources, even with an agency. So is it really worth paying in addition to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, we had a 1.5 million dollar contract? Is it something we can absorb? And I'm not saying it's the right answer, but it's definitely a question from the community, and how do we display that on a data basis so that everyone can see? You know, you could be saving a hundred thousand dollars, but you're simply not going to get the amount of services that you think you're getting. And I think in part of, you know, having that just transparent discussion, it's come up a lot, and I want to make sure that somehow, at least I want to feel comfortable in the next voting round, that we're making the right decision. I don't take that from anybody who's doing, I'm sure you know exactly what you're doing, and it, and it gets a lot easier. I just don't, if we're going to have trouble with resources, which is a problem across America, is it worth spending the money and not maybe putting it elsewhere, within our school system? I'm not right or wrong, I'm just. Yeah, I mean, again, uh, when we come to that point, January, February, I can provide the analysis, and at the end, whatever the extra costs, if the board would like to somehow to deal with it, there will be cuts and whatever the decision will be that time, but we can work on that. Thank you. Thank you, Erfon.
Any other discussion on that? All right, we, um, if there's no other discussion on fifty-one, we need a roll call, please.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, I, I, we have any, I don't believe we have any committee reports? Nope. Okay. Um, on old business? Anyone have any? Old business? I have a couple. All right, um, the newest old business is my sale of my house fell through, so you stuck with me a little longer. Um, but we're going back on this week, so, uh, but I will maintain my seat if it's still acceptable with everybody, knowing I'm a little up and down. Thank you. The vacancy position, I believe, is the deadline's Friday?
Friday, three o'clock.
I would ask everybody to review, I think, I think you might have sent it out. Take some time and review policy one forty-three, it's the process for filling the the vacancy. Um in regard to numbers and and how you would do it, discussion, there can be discussion, a closed session, but uh voting needs to be very open and public, because you're voting to the people, this is normally a public vote. So just ask everybody to take a look, it explains what to do in case it's a tie, if we have more than, you know, a couple of people, so, thank you on that, um. Also, on old business, uh we had postponed our our get-together with Matt Lee from School Boards.
No, I'm gonna email tomorrow.
Okay, um I I would love to be part of that, you know, so if we can try to figure out some dates uh coming up in October, maybe the beginning, uh see what your schedule is, you know, one date I looked at was like October fifth, it's the first Tuesday of the month, sticking with the Tuesdays like that we do, so just everybody look at your calendar, I think Damian had asked everyone to keep that in mind as well. New business, back-to-school nights was was mentioned, um Frank had requested
Oh, I have a question, I'm sorry, is back-to-school night going to be virtual?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Uh Frank had requested if he uh he would like to take Amanda's seat on Buildings and Grounds. So in order to do that, I will take Frank off of negotiations. And when a new person comes on board, they will take that negotiation seat. They will take the policy seat that Amanda has, and they will take, that person will take the, go to public library, just to finish out the year. Okay, so those are, those are the positions on policy, on the uh committees that would need to be filled to replace where Amanda is the vacancy. And
So wait a minute, that means I'm on negotiations by myself now?
No, 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 Frank, no, Eileen, it's it's you.
Oh, Eileen, it's just me and Eileen, okay.
Yes. Uh no, I don't expect there'll be anything that would happen before the beginning of the year, anyway, do you?
I mean, all our contracts are
Done, yeah.
Yeah, so nothing would, we're good, okay, and then this would all be redamped
Right, in January. In January.
After we, after we work. Um, yeah, so, okay, so Frank, you're on on Buildings and Grounds, and I know that your your heart is into that field down there. So I know you said to us, you're gonna be able to pull this off without charging the taxpayers any money, so it's all yours, go run. Yeah, yeah, you did, yeah, you did.
I said we worked towards it, that's for sure.
So, great, thank you, um and anybody else have anything else under note, new business?
So I do, a few things, first, thank you Kathy for switching me over, I just figured
No problem.
We don't have any negotiations, so I didn't want to sit back and do nothing, so I saw this opportunity, I do want to thank Amanda Montgomery for her service, uh she has been exceptional here, she's definitely a fierce leader and uh and a big heart, a lot of interest, and and she knows I feel this way, very smart, very smart. I I remember, I think it was one of my first meetings up here, when she spoke up for a void and a precision as well, and uh and she was very versatile in the things she said, and kudos to her for serving and giving our kids the best. Uh I'm glad to continue to be with you, Mrs. Van Buren, you know, there's no hard feelings here, you do what you gotta do, and and I'm sorry about your house, especially in a prime market. I do just want to bring up a few things. One of the things I want to bring up is, it seems like we've had some lunch issues uh with parents just wondering what's happening at lunch, maybe, you know, and I and I say this publicly, I'm sure there's some portion controls mandates that we have to follow, just like in almost any school district about how much we're feeding these the children um at a given time of serving during lunch. I'm hearing there's salads without dressing, again, I don't know what kind of health benefactor is there. Uh but I do, I do want to encourage, if we ever look at this as a border to future and and together with Mr. Kennedy and everyone else, is for healthier options. Um I remember in New York City, that was a big drive, you know, it wasn't just pizza, mozzarella sticks or burgers, there were really good other options, so much so that even the emergency units in New York and teachers and things can now get additional, uh you know, healthier pasta, whether it's wheat, you know, I know we have some apples, some carrots, so I don't know what the quality control is behind meals at school level, but it's something we should probably look at every year and see how we improve. Uh I remember chocolate milk wasn't a thing in New York for a while, because it wasn't a healthier-for-you option. I remember at the rec center, we went from chips and sodas to juice boxes, they were organic, and the the cost was very minuscule, so it's something I think we need to encourage, juvenile diabetes is a real serious thing in America. Uh we're just not, we're simply not eating well, and it starts from the bottom, so it starts teaching those kids to move on up, so
I do think, Frank, if I could just interject, Ervin, aren't meals somewhat mandated, aren't they kind of sort of guided by the food that's provided, isn't it pretty much guided by the Department of Health and standards that are set?
Yeah, the Department of Agriculture have their own guidelines that we have to follow for the portions, and we are also with through the Pompeonion, they have a dietitian, they have to, that calculation, how much protein versus other stuff. Uh with the portion size also, there's a uh also guy guidance with that. Um it was like around ten years ago, with uh Mrs. Obama, there's H F K, Healthy and Hunger uh Kids Act. With that, with that one, there's a certain limits that we can uh serve, I mean, even the the weight of the cheese on the pizza is restricted. So, and I know that since then, we have issues like the the high school football team player will not be enough with that portion, um but it doesn't mean that uh we we should, we should just
Now, we also want to get a parental advisory committee together to get some feedback from them, as well from our students. Um again, I, you know, I always ask if parents do have issues, that they do reach out to me, a lot of it's not getting back to me at first, it's getting to board members, which is the 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 uh public's right, but, you know, on anything, they they should be going through their principals and and myself as well, so that we can address it sooner and not wait to a board meeting or um at any point in time, anyone can call me or email me, I think I'm very good at getting back to people. If you contact your principal and they're not getting back to you, that's when you could contact me directly, and, because I'm always gonna ask, have you talked to your principal? If it's a school issue, so just a reminder to everybody that um I'm available by phone, email. Um I I do a good job of getting back if you have questions, or uh you know, I know Facebook has become a place where people post things. So I get, I get secondhand, uh what's going on, or what people are bothered about, and a lot of times, it's a phone call or clarification on something that, uh you know, we can clear a lot of things up, so again, I just um open-door policy, please reach out to me whenever you can.
Yeah, and I think if I can just piggyback on that too, there is protocol for board members, and there is a chain of command that technically, if someone comes to a board member and says, I have a real serious issue with that, your response should be, go to your building principal. If they're really uncomfortable, you know, try to help, but it it should not come on your lap as a board member to do that, they should follow the chain of command and go through processes, is that correct?
And I and I totally agree with that, uh it's kind of
I know we all want to, Frank, help Frank.
No, no, that's not true, I mean, help is one thing and not follow the rules another. I always actually say, go back to, I I, before I say principal, I say, just email your superintendent.
No, to go to the superintendent first, chain of command.
I get it, but he is our superintendent, and that's who we kind of report to, so I just sometimes, if it's a slip or not, I do say that. Um but at the end of the day, we're a voice, and we have an opportunity to be up here, and since we can't discuss these things privately, we could do it as a board, because every member's opinion counts, so it's, you know, that's why I rather speak it in public. I, you know, definitely, I think it's H A F K A, I think it's what it's called, I remember Michelle Obama, big drive on frozen fruit, on frozen vegetables and things of that nature, I I I know it very well, actually. Um I know there's varying packages based on cost, and what, you know, your suppliers can issue you, so I'm just bringing it up. It it's all, I'm bringing it up, um I also just, again, it's not something that I've 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 had some members of the public who are attorneys in law, and someone brought to me today, and I've also asked them to reach out to Mr. Kennedy, uh about maybe creating a debate team in our school system. You know, um they call it a mock uh trial, uh something that New Jersey funds as well. I think it would be something very good for our school system for middle, I think it starts, if I'm not wrong, I I've heard it's like eleven and up, so it might help our school system, I just put it out there, and you know, I I I want to thank uh Sabrina Curran, she took on the middle school uh void for PTO, so publicly, I want to encourage people to get involved in the middle school. Uh the one thing I do have to say, I think we need, as now that we have three schools, we should probably consider like an executive PTO or town PTO, something much larger that works to hand in hand, because based on what we've seen in our rec football programs and other programs, we definitely need a lot of hands on deck um outside of this, uh outside of your educational staff, uh to try to keep driving our community. Uh it looks good, it it's doing well, uh with that said, I also want to thank the police department. I I've seen something uh this week uh from our officers, you know, making sure that our streets are safer for our kids, that people aren't double parking when they're dropping off, and as a board member and as a father and a resident of this town, I really ask all the parents to just be considerate when you're dropping kids off, you know, I saw a close encounter with a child and a crossing guard on uh last Thursday, you know, they're parking at the stop signs, and and she, you know, our crossing guards are not athletes, and, you know, it takes time to get across, and you don't see the kid coming. So I just encourage everyone to respect our police department, um they're not doing it to be anything other than making sure the children are safe. And I encourage all those parents just to please try to just consider it, what today could be my kid, tomorrow is yours. Let's just avoid it, it it's 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 terrible what you see, it's steam and Bigsby sometimes, it really is triple parking in a one-way road with two parking sides, I don't know what can be done, Mr. Kennedy, but anything that could be done to reduce the curve, to maybe improve drop-off. Uh I've heard some, you know, sometimes parents are running, trying to get work by nine o'clock, so they're sitting to drop off the pre-k kids that go in at eight-thirty, and they're there by eight o'clock, you know, in the hopes that they can get a few extra minutes. And what's happening is causing a backlog for people who have to drop their kids off at eight-ten. So, look, I know it's not cookie cutter, but if there's a traffic study, something that could be done to try to fix this problem, because it, all it takes is one child, all it takes is one time.
And just a thought, can um those streets be closed, can the police put cones on them, at least during the school uh pickup and drop-off times?
I mean, I do have a meeting with the police tomorrow specifically to discuss Dean and talk about times for drop-offs and stuff uh with preschool kids, uh we're trying to work together to see what we can do to improve it. Um but at the end of the day, it's it's uh, you know, you can't park your car and get out, it's like you have to drop your kid off, so we have to figure out a way uh where the kids feel, the parents feel safe dropping their kid off to go right into the schoolyard to get into the building. So, I I don't know if we can close the street off, I've been told no. You know, but we can try and create a lane for parents to drop off and get in and out. Uh actually, Captain Petersky called me today with a couple of different ideas for preschool, so we're gonna meet tomorrow with the principal and the the preschool administrator and talk about, maybe we can start preschool a little bit earlier. Uh but there is a handoff with preschool, uh three-year-old child, uh they are pretty much walking them to the teacher, because I think uh there there's not, you know, a three-year-old kid walking right down, anything can happen if we lose a kid, that would be a real tough situation, so right now, it's a handoff, but we're seeing what else we can do to improve that, so either start them a little bit later and say, hey, from eight-twenty-five to eight-thirty, you can pull right up and drop your kid off, we'll be out here, uh but we're gonna meet tomorrow actually uh to discuss some different scenarios, and we're gonna try and see what works.
I don't think you could actually shut a street off a block, think about if you're living on that block, you have to go to work, your kids have to go to work, how are you supposed to get in and out? It's actually not fair to the residents, I know safety, of course, for the children, but it's not fair for the residents either, so
It's true, but it but it happens.
No, I know, but you you can't really
I don't think the answer is shutting down the street.
You can't shut that, I don't think
Well, I don't think
The police will talk to the superintendent.
I don't think that would be the answer anyway.
I'm sure
There is a lot of things that you can do.
Yeah, there's a lot of things.
Well, definitely, but there's also towns that do close the street down for half an hour, and there's rules of parking, right? Between this time and this time, you're simply, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, let's let's look into it, I've looked at um the sidewalks are horrendous, so think about a child either getting hit or a parent, um because people just disobey, are very disobedient at times, and look, it's anyone, it could be me tomorrow. If if I'm rushing, I'm just simply not in my mindset, getting a child ready, combing her hair, when she tells you, I don't want it like that, daddy, I get it. I totally get it, my son is new, she could give me a rough time, I, kudos to all the mothers, all the fathers today that are heavily involved, that that this is a real issue, so you're upset, you're now you're trying to drop off your behind. But but I do know that the sidewalks are also very dangerous around, let's say, steam, Bigsby's a little better, but steam is horrendous, and and I've seen massive lawsuits for a kid breaking their leg on a sidewalk, or getting their feet caught, we have dips because a tree was removed and wasn't fulfilled. You know, parents strollers, strollers can't get through those sidewalks, so if they're that horrendous and we have to repair them at some point, I'm assuming faster than never, then why don't we look at a curb cut, right, something that hopefully we get aids, that we could just, kids, you know, parents will curl tail in, drop your kid off, it's also a handoff, you know, I think Steam did something very cool recently where parents, I remember the first day I went down, I was, I was actually like, whoa, so many kids and parents inside of the in the basketball court area, um and now the parents have to stay on top. That's wonderful, because it 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 killed the crowd for the kids, you could see your kids going in, it's a safe handoff, and it's a beyond that gate, you know, now that's school property, so just wonder if maybe a curb cut in the future will prevent that, and I'm sure that's not just steam, that's Bigsby. Great job has been done in the high school, kudos to the previous board members and the ones that exist that you get that roundabout today, um which alleviated a lot of traffic issues, I remember that, so it's the, you know, I don't know what the answers are, I just think that something has to be done.
I agree with you a hundred percent, and and not to minimize it in any sense, but this issue has gone on since my children were in elementary
Unfortunately.
And my children have kids that have graduated from college, so this has gone on for a long time.
That's very unfortunate.
So that's forty years without a curb cut, forty years without a discussion.
Doesn't mean it has to stay the same either.
Too many years without a solution.
We did get one way, at that, at that point, there was no, we did get extended parking spaces on the side, the problem is people are not cooperating.
I know.
There's simply more people as well, there are more people, we all drive, so and so it's something that I agree, we we need to
Well, nobody walks to school anymore.
Right, nobody walks.
Back in the day, we walked to school.
But, right, I did, but nobody walks anymore. So it is something that we need to look at, well, I think to back up for a second, something that Mr. Kennedy mentioned is in, for this instance, for the lunch, all of it is vitally important, and that's an advisory board, because then it's gonna get that that level of communication to the superintendent in real time, from real people, students included, so that maybe we, you know, we're not just talking in a bubble, and we're we're actually able to go out and source some resource, what can we do?
Right.
You know, you have more people looking at it, to Frank's point, more people volunteering to look at it rather than just poo-poo it. It it is gonna speak to more unified communication and more unified approach.
And I did have a meeting with the architect today, and I I said this was something that we talked about probably two and a half years ago, and then COVID hit, so like, some of these things are, have been on the uh back burner, to say, because we just haven't had all the kids show up to school, so now it's right in our face, everyone's back. Uh and that doesn't look like it's changing anytime, so hundred percent, and and we're looking to, they want to get, do a real traffic study, pick up, uh drop off, and give us some real data, give us some real information, and some real uh ideas of what we can do to improve that. So they might say to you, hey, do this, do that, this company does it with a lot of different schools, I'll say in my district, it's a problem too for my middle school uh kids, when my wife drops them off, the same thing, people sit outside and wait till they could go in, and the traffic is backed up around the corner. And that's on a sunny eighty degrees day, when it rains, forget about it.
I've seen people in the past actually pull up in their car and sit there and do their laundry, so that they have, you know, they they get their parking spot, so they sit there, they'll sit there for half an hour, do their laundry, read a book, play a game on the computer. It's just, and the sidewalks, we sit, we did steam sidewalks in the front.
We did some, we did some. We also, Nick has also did a look at that and got a company out to tell us what we got to do to fix anything that could be dangerous.
You know, and, and, and it's not, unfortunately, it's not just the school property or the areas that then go to the school property. If you, it's almost like, how do you help, how do you work with the town, right? Because if you come down large, terrible, you know, my daughter, I walk. So she, she walks and she's like, bad, good, bad, she says bad more often than good. And it's interesting how she can recognize that at the age of seven. And, and I don't know why our community can miss out on those kind of things. And that's dangerous. But again, I, I wasn't going to be quiet about it, I saw it, it, it was, it was terrible and I figured I'd say something. The other thing, and it's probably more of a legal question. I once was a part of certain school districts where we did private fundraising. As, you know, board members, in that case, they're more community liaisons, PTOs, but this fundraising, aside from the PTA or PTO, was private fundraising for the school district, like an aside budget. Again, the law talks about many things, but it never says we can't, as an individual member, go out and, and go to private companies and say, hey, you know, if it's allowable, I don't, you would have to answer that, Mr. Suckus.
We, we do have, Bogota, who, who, what, what superintendent put that together? The Bogota.
They never found.
It never really came to formation, they put a whole thing.
So that's the whole thing, look, I, I come from a district that raised a million and a half dollars of private money a year from previous graduates, from ethnic companies, from anything that represented our community, anyone that represented our, you know, very large sizes. And with that, you know, there were, there were, there was, you know, dance traveling for middle school and above. With that, we traveled abroad to learn about poverty in different communities. And I'm always thinking, how do we accelerate the mindset of our youth? Now more than ever, right? They've spent two years locked down. I can only imagine what we're about to see over the next six months to a year as far as mental illnesses, mental challenges, you know, emotional challenges. So if there's ever an understanding for me at least, you know, there's Goya out there, he was a resident of Bogota for many years over a larch. You know, the Inannaway family would be fond to donate some money, I'm sure, if we press down. You know, there's a lot of different companies out there that will definitely, I'm sure, they will contribute to, to bring our kids to different areas across the country and they can learn, they can, they can have dialogue with different people of different kind, different parts of the world and different understanding and different experiences. But just across the city, right, just in New York, maybe just to flourish. And I'm, I'm speaking on the basis of what we've done in the past, I personally and a group of others. You know, maybe some dance travel, art travel, things that they can see outside of our small Bogota community. Because it enhances education, performance, substance. And if there's anything we can do, you know, I personally would say if we can all come together and find a way and find out how the Board of Ed could get a fund like that, and maybe we could send letters out as, on behalf, I don't know what the rules are, I'm just asking, but maybe on behalf of Mr. Kennedy or as individual board members, say, hey, we're asking for help. We would like to enrich our children's capacity to learn and understand and become more versatile. So I don't know what the answers are, but I really challenge you all to, to look for a way to get it done. Because if they do it in New York, which is a large, large, same federal laws, maybe there's a way for us to do.
It exists, it hasn't had the manpower to function.
Oh, and the times have changed.
Then we'll pass it to you, babe. Are we good, Frank?
That's all.
Done. Okay. Anyone else? All righty. So if I may, I'm in a motion for a hearing of the couples, please.
For random.
Thank you. Second?
Okay.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All righty, if anyone has any comments, name and address, please, either in person or online. We have some people in the audience. Thank you for your patience.
I'm here to, I guess, get a little bit more informed.
Can you use the microphone?
Yes, I can't hear. Thank you. Better? Better, thank you.
Okay. Do you need me to repeat my name and everything or?
I've got Sandro Osteen at West Road Street. Thank you.
I'm here because I don't claim to know everything and I need more clarification on things. On Friday, when I dropped my son off who's in pre-k at Steen, I was running late and I was the last one out and the security guard was there to close the gate. And when he closed it, he put a padlock on it when I left. This to me was a red flag. I said to myself, is this a fire violation? You know, is this illegal? You know? I don't know. All I could do was ask questions as a concerned parent. I sit there and I'm just thinking to myself, man, you know, what if there's a fire? What if there's a shooter? Now, if there's a shooter and these kids come running out through that door, our kids are just sitting ducks. I'm not, listen, I'm not here, you know, to wish bad things on our town or anything like that, I'm a realist. And these things happen and they happen more often than not or that we want to. So I get why the padlocks are there, you know, and I'm appreciative that they're trying to keep people out, keep our kids safe, but it can be very counterintuitive in a situation like that. I just, I don't know how it could just be overlooked and think that it's okay. I, I can't, I can't, I can't accept that. I can't accept that our, our police department thinks that that's an answer. Now, I did have a conversation this morning with the principal and the security guard. And, you know, he was like, you know, talk to the police off, you know, to the security guard and voice your concerns. And I told him, and he's like, well, you know, I have a key. And so does the principal. I said, okay, that's great. I said, well, God forbid, there is a shooting and you get shot, then what? So I was under the impression that every teacher had a key and that's not the case. It's only the principal, the security guard, and I think the custodian. That's horrible. That's horrible. That's like playing god with our kids and putting them in a situation like that. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I know that a padlock is not acceptable. You know, I, I get it, I understand why we have to keep our kids safe. But, you know, if we could find money for rec centers, we could find money for this, that, that other thing that they're building down by the sun club, I can't think of it right now. And man, we could find money to do something for, for our kids that's not a padlock. I don't know what it is. I don't know if, you know, the, the security guard said, maybe it's putting those electric badges where the teachers have them and they could put them and then the doors automatically open. If you think of a crisis moment like that, you know, I think of my son who started pre-k, he's four. If God forbid, something like that happened, you know, Ms. Holly would be overwhelmed with ten kids, twelve kids clinging to her, screaming and crying. And I'm sure her maternal instinct would be to, to guard all those kids as any other teacher. Why would we put that kind of responsibility on our teachers anyway? I just, I don't know. Like I said, I don't know. I don't know the answers, I don't know everything, but I know that it did not sit well with me. And I think it's horrible that I wasn't aware, or maybe I missed the memo, I don't know, where, where I was told that this is the procedures for the school. It's not only Steen, it's Bixby and the middle school.
So this is, this is what I'll say to you and we, I, I will not publicly comment on our school security and what we do. We, we work with the police department very closely. And the police department, at the end of the day, advises us what to do. So what I can say is you can have a conversation with someone in the police department. Captain Petersky is actually the one that you could speak to. But I, we would never speak on our procedures publicly because that is telling people what we do. And that is, unfortunately, this is recorded right now and will be posted on YouTube. So if we comment on how we would handle a situation, that is giving information to someone that would want to do harm. So you can have that concern. And privately, if you came to me, I might have been able to give you that information. But publicly, I, I can't comment on that because that would be putting people in danger. Because people would have exactly the blueprint of what we do if they do something. And we don't, I can't share that publicly. But like I said, everything is in, we work very closely with the police department. And when it comes to school security, I think we do an excellent job. And everything is run through the police department of what we do. And they give us the recommendation of what we should and should not do.
I'm not asking for you to tell me that you agree or not, but I need to, I don't know, I guess I need somebody to tell me that they understand where I'm coming from.
Oh, a hundred percent.
And how, it just doesn't sit well. It doesn't sit well because you're playing god with my kid and everybody else's kid.
So I, I understand where you're coming from. I have three kids in school too, right? So I, being an administrator and, and dealing with school security, I have a little bit more background on it. So again, you can have the conversation with Captain Petersky regarding this issue. And he will give you, you know, what he can give you, but this is not something that we share. So I understand your concern, I, I get it. On the surface, I could see where you're coming from, but, you know, knowing what we know is, is what, is why we do what we do.
Well, I mean, I guess, thank you. I didn't really get, I mean, like I said, I didn't come here looking for answers, I came here for, you know, to made aware of things, to, to try to understand. Because all I have is my point of view as a parent and, you know, I questioned it on Friday as a parent. Why is this like this? Is this, you know, like I said, was it a hazard or once in a while? And I was told it's not. And I'm not saying that the police department is not doing their job, but I think that also as, you know, as a board, I don't know, like, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't you be like, this is not okay on your own and be like, you know, we should do something different, invest in some sort of other security measure instead of a padlock. A padlock to me is like a cheap solution. But, you know, that's just my opinion. And I just needed to voice my opinion on this and, you know, I get it. Like I said, I get wanting to keep people out, but it's counterintuitive in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Sheri has her hand, Sheri? I got to promote you to panelists. You're going to be seen.
Can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me?
A little broken up.
We can hear you, it's just a little broken up.
Oh goodness, okay. I'm going to try to speak clearly, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, better now.
Okay, great, sorry. Sheri Salamov, three fifty Larch Ave. Just to touch on what you guys spoke about regarding the pre-k drop-off. I was speaking to Captain Petersky and Officer Polly along with our principal. And I have two suggestions, if you'd like to hear them. We can take, we can't pick, we can't drop off our pre-k students earlier, which would be ideal because I think the kid, the smaller kid should be put into the building sooner. But I also know that, you know, you have probably some more, the teachers have to come in earlier. You know, they have to go up the steps, it's probably more of a thing that has to get approved. So if that's not ideal, let's take on what Bixby does and have a five-minute parking sign. You know, you can either drop off your older kids and if you have a, a pre-keeper like I do, you go around the block a couple of times and then, you know, you get back online. And then closer to the eight-thirty mark, you have five minutes to drop off your pre-keeper. Because you do have to sign in and sign out our pre-k kids. So we can't just drop them off, let them walk down the steps and, and just, you know, let them go. We have to physically sign them in and sign them out. But everyone seems really responsive and wanting to make the situation better. So I think, yeah, I think a five-minute drop-off makes sense, it doesn't clog up the streets, it keeps people moving and kind of prevents what, you know, Mr. Miranda was saying, you know, because it's not fair for people to just park there for forty-five minutes because they have older kids and younger kids. So I understand that as well, having three children of all those ages. I also wanted to just thank Zabrina Curran and everyone that stepped up on PTOs. I know it's probably really hard for Bixby, having only two officers. I encourage Penn to get involved, it's really, really important. And if, Mr. Kennedy, you feel it's important to have maybe a liaison or an administrative PTO meeting. You know, Steen has a lot going on, we have about five or six major fundraisers in the works. And I could definitely share that info if they'd like with middle school, with Bixby. I'm in, I'm in great contact with Zabrina, but if you wanted to make that more of a conversation, we can definitely do that. And I just wanted to thank our question, that's again, for doing a phenomenal job keeping our kids safe going back and forth to school. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Captain Petersky from the Bogota Police Department and a borough resident. As far as the locks on the schools, it was believed that it was a fire department issue, that it was a form of, it would stop the children from going outside. But after contacting the fire marshal and our fire department, they concluded that it wasn't. At this time, the, the locks are on there, police department has to take a proactive approach to active shooter incidents. That's number one, is to lock the facility down. The children in a lockdown are not allowed out. That's about the only thing that I can tell you. If you want to meet with me afterwards, I can explain some other things, details to you, but I can't say it in front of everybody. Be assured, your children in Bogota are the most protected of any, anywhere around. The police department is well-prepared and well-equipped to counter any problem that might occur with them. So I just want to let everybody know. Okay. I have a letter from the fire marshal and the fire department stating that, if you want to pass this round, that it is out of the realm of the fire department, so that the gates be unlocked. One of the fire officials went to the school and said it was a violation, it's actually not. So we clarified that today. Contacted Mr. Kennedy, spoke about it, and I told him I'd be here tonight with the letter to clarify that. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I see Antoinette Ramirez. Antoinette?
Hi, guys. I just wanted to come on again. I say, going back to something Mr. Kennedy said about reaching out to him directly and him being responsive. And, and I just need to say, you know, as much as I ask my questions and, you know, I know I'm on here constantly. I just have to say, as someone who is a parent with kids who also go out of district, you really, Mr. Kennedy, are outstanding with responding. And I don't, I don't say that lightly, I mean that very, very sincerely, because I just like, you know, saying to the public, I just want you to know, I have reached out to him several times, you know, with my own personal issues. And I have never waited more than a couple of hours for him to either call me, email me back, whatever it is. And I don't get that. I'm not going to say names of schoolspeople, but I do not get that out of district. But I do get that with him, and so I do want to thank you for that. You, you really are tremendous with responding immediately, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm smiling under my mask.
Good night, this evening, I thought it. Anyone else?
See anyone else?
I have a motion to close Susan's comments, please. Motion, darling. Thank you. Any discussion? Hey, you, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It was nothing else? Nothing else? May I have a motion to adjourn? Second, please.
Second, Lisa.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Please get some data that would be.
I'll send an email out tomorrow.